Creator and sustainer of all things and all people, you are the source of all wisdom and light. Enlighten our minds to receive your guidance so that we may lead us to true wisdom. May all that we say and do in service of the county, whether as elected member or officer, be in accordance with your will and for the good of your people. Amen. Thank you. Good afternoon, members. I will start with our normal House duties. The evacuation procedure. In the event of having to evacuate the council chamber, please leave by one of the two exits at the rear of the chamber. Officers will be on hand to assist with anybody, people with disabilities. Mobile phones. May I ask all members who have mobile phones with them to ensure that they are switched off so they will not disturb this meeting? Agenda item number one, chairman's announcements. Mr Orson Duncan Lucas. It is with great sadness I report the death of a former chairman of the county council, Mr Orson Duncan Lucas. Mr Lucas served on the county council from 1985 to 2005, representing the Bushlow Electoral Division in Odeby and Wigston. He was chairman of the county council during 93 to 94, the simple year. He served on the Arts and Libraries Museum Committee, Agricultural Committee, Environment Committee, and Resource Committee. The funeral service will be held at Wigston Magna United Reform Church on Long Street on Tuesday, the first of March at 1:00 p.m. Would members please join me in a silent tribute to Mr Lucas? Thank you. Her Majesty the Queen's Platinum Jubilee. Can I welcome Her Majesty's Lord Lieutenant, Mr Mike Capor OBE, to the meeting and thank him for being my guest at lunchtime? As members are aware, Her Majesty the Queen has now become the first British monarch to celebrate 70 years on the throne. And therefore, celebrating the Platinum Jubilee this year is going to be a very special to mark the occasion of the extended bank holiday, which is Thursday the 2nd of June to Sunday the 5th of June, will provide an opportunity for communities and people to come together to celebrate this historic milestone. There will be a number of celebrations such as street parties, the big lunch, beacon lighting, and national celebrations. In addition to the national initiatives, the Lord Lieutenant will be leading celebrations in Leicestershire and Leicester City. He has his own three initiatives, which were launched earlier this month. They were an arts competition for key stage one and key stage two children, a 70 at 70 garden party at Bowman Hall for 70 people who were born in 1952, an award for 70 organisations, whether that be business, community, or voluntary group, or a school that has done something exceptional and positive to develop community spirit. Members have already been informed of these initiatives, but on behalf of the Lord Lieutenant, I hope that you will promote these initiatives within your electoral divisions and communities. Further information can be found on the Lord Lieutenant's Platinum Jubilee website. I'm also pleased to inform members that the county council is also supporting the Jubilee. I along with the Lord Lieutenant will be planting a tree at County Hall on Friday, the 11th of March as part of the Queen's Green Canopy. In addition, a beacon will be lit at Beacon Hill on Thursday, the 2nd of June, as well as lighting up County Hall. This will be a very special year and one which we should all try and promote within our communities. Paula Murray, BEM. I'm sure members will wish to join me in congratulating Paula Murray, a group support managing the environmental transport department who has awarded the British Empire Medal in the New Year's honours. And in addition, I wish to congratulate everyone in Leicestershire who has also received a personal honour, as I'm sure members will wish to do so as well. Mike Sandys. I'm pleased to inform members the Lord Lieutenant commissioned seven new deputy lieutenants in honour of the service to local communities. One of the seven was Mike Sandys, Director of Public Health, and I'm sure members would wish to congratulate Mike on his appointment. And I would suggest in doing so, we reflect also on the people I've previously mentioned. Thank you. Chief Constable of Leicestershire Constable Simon Cole, QPM. Simon Cole, the chief constable for Leicestershire, will be retired shortly. Simon took his position in June 2010 and has been responsible for not only leading the force, but also developing and managing relationships with key partners and the community. He also chaired the multi-agency Local Resilience Forum and led it admirably throughout the Covid pandemic. Simon's contribution to both police and community life in Leicestershire has been immense, and his close support with the leadership has provided assurance for our communities. I would like to place on record my appreciation of that of the council. He will be a hard act to follow, and we wish him all the best for the future. Upcoming events. Over the next few months, I'll be hosting a number of events, including my charity dinner in aid of dementia, UK, volunteers reception, and a county service. I would just like to take the opportunity, just to mention, you should have all had a leaflet on your desk, and I really would encourage you to try if possible to attend. It is a very worthwhile charity. I speak from a position of my wife who's ill with vascular dementia now in a home, and I know how serious it affects people, and I would really welcome as many of you can attend. Thank you all very much. Thank you. Right, we move now to item number two, the minutes. I move the minutes of the meeting of the council held on the 1st of December 2021, copies of which have been circulated to members, be taken as read and confirmed and signed. Dr Fulton, will you second? Is that agreed? Thank you. Agenda item three, declaration of interest. I invite members who wish to do so to make declarations of interest in respect of items on the agenda for this meeting. I'm assuming that all members who are members of district councils wish to declare registoable interest in relationship to the medium term financial strategy 2022/23 to 2025/26. I'm advised the following members wish to declare a non-registoable interest in the MTFs. Mr Payne CC in relationship to passenger transport issues as his family operates a taxi business. Mr Philamore, County Council, in relationship to special educational needs and disabilities, SEND issues due to his wife's employment. None of the interests that I have been declared will prevent members from participating in the meeting. Are there any other declarations? No, thank you. Right, we move on to item agenda four, questions asked, understanding order, that is, seven bracket one, bracket two, and bracket five. The question and reply of the order paper will be taken as read and into the minutes. I've been notified there's no supplementary questions. Thank you. Agenda item five, report of the Constitution Committee, a review of standing orders, meeting procedure rules. I will invite Mr Rushton to move the motion which has been adjourned since the previous meeting, and Mrs Taylor to second the motion. Mr Rushton. Thank you. Mrs Taylor. Thank you. We will now take a vote on the motion set out in the order paper. All those in favour? Thank you. Thank you. Agenda item six, to receive a position statement from members of the cabinet leader. I will invite the leader to make his position statement. Then, when the leader has finished his statement, I will invite Mr Mulaney and then Mr Hunt as leaders of the opposition to speak first. If you wish to speak, please raise your hands and then I will call you to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. So you've got the position statement in front of you, and I'm not going to read it out as usual, presumably you've read it, I'll just add a few items. So obviously, we welcome the publication of the lettering on my paper, and we were particularly happy that we actually made it through the door into the first nine. The Conservative Group, as you know, went whole hot and said it was accepted directly elected mayor, as we thought this gave us the best opportunity for getting much powers and as much money as possible for Leicestershire. Unfortunately, following discussions with representatives of government, what we thought was a pure county deal is not exactly what we're bidding for. They're now referring to the White Paper to functional economic areas, fears that they have caused. And Leicestershire on its own is not a functional economic area despite the fact we've got 70,000 people. So to proceed without to do a deal with the city mayor, or with what's now, obviously, conversations with the city mayor, and conversations with Oliver in Leipold. City Mayor, as you can imagine, is not particularly keen on having a Conservative, but directly elected mayor above him. So we now need to start negotiations with government. They're ongoing. The chief has put up a paper which we agree, which we go in next week to start negotiations to see, in a nutshell, how close we can get to the level three. Because it's the level three, if you seek to write a paper, where the money and responsibility lie. So we need to get as close as we can to that. So we're going to start discussions with nothing in and nothing out. And I promise my group that I will bring nothing at trial without consulting with consultants. We start the devil doing negotiations and briefbacks to group, but ultimately bring anything back to full council. Also, in the spirit of collegiate working, I'm meeting all the district leaders in the foreseeable future, including you, USt, District Leader. Neil O'Brien is coordinating this, just waiting for the diary entry to appear. If he's real, I'll attend. I've offered them to come and meet here at County Hall. We've got better facilities in some districts, but if it's online, I will attend. On the net zero and the green agenda, so obviously we're proud that we're doing well ourselves. Labour's done a good job with it. I want this council to be seen ultimately as a green council, recognised by the public, as green as people recognise we are at 40% of it. So everybody knows before funding, I want everybody to recognise that we're a green council. We should do everything that we can to make that. Obviously, we've not got the money to offer the whole of the county ourselves, but we need to be a place leader and inspirational leader, point people in the right direction, help people achieve what they want to achieve, help businesses achieve what we want to achieve, and be respected as the go-to place for green advice. One thing I am proud of, if you go down the position statement, is we're working with districts to secure £4 million in additional funding to help the less advantaged of us in the community with their gas bill, the electric bills, et cetera, by helping them insulate their properties, sell the pounds to different places. All those sorts of things show them very clearly about that time. Finally, another one I'm here, which is relatively cheap, is the tree nursery. Now, there's ideas of where it could go. I've got ideas of places out in Robert Ashburn's area by the National Forest Start. Hopefully, the district council, if it goes there, will contribute towards it as well. Particular standards in a good place, when we're wanting to plant these 70,000 trees, was close to we can get to achieving 70,000 trees planted during our tenure, this, when I say our tenure, I mean this electoral cycle. So that will be good. MTFs, I'm not going to say much about it. I think MTFs, all I want to do is thank Chris and his team for the hard work they've done. Honestly, it's been tougher this year, as you can see from the numbers. And also, place on record, my thanks to Dave, who's on New Environment, and Richard, who's the same old Richard, for the work that they're doing. On the Platinum Jubilee, nothing more to add to what the chairman has said, except we all think that we are way more than.
All road closures, et cetera, which will certainly help out for some of the smaller parish councils, like the ones I've represented for one. Apart from Ashbytown Council, which is big, but the little ones sometimes struggle. And also, I'm glad here, if you just see in the next paragraph, we're offering support and guidance, because some of the parish councils are small and they do struggle with our forms. So we're offering help to fill in the forms. And then finally, storm impact and thanks to staff. It's in my position statement. I note coming up after me is Ozzy. He knows a lot, lot more about it than me, so I won't steal his thunder. Chairman, thank you. Could I now call Mr Mulaney, please?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. So I would welcome the statements on the green agenda and also the Queen's Jubilee, and add my thanks to the staff whose work was first class during the impact of the storms. In terms of the county deal, obviously, what we have wanted for some time is fair funding, because we're the worst funded authority. That's not being delivered, and in fact, in the MTFS today, it states effectively that this is extremely unlikely to be delivered in the near future. And so the county deal was the real, the real hope of getting money and investment into Leicestershire. And so therefore, it's extremely disappointing to see that there was this knockback that seems to have been reported today in terms of the elected mayor. I believe we were the only ones that did put in a bid that included an elected mayor, and you are aware that the Liberal Democrat Group from the start did not agree with that part of the bid, because we don't agree with centralising power in one person's hand and in the costs of creating that post. So we're now in a situation where accessing the level three support seems to be uncertain, which means we may end up only with the level two support. So this is extremely disappointing that having failed to deliver on the fair funding and everything then becoming the county deal, which has been much flaunted as bringing in huge amounts of investment, that even that now is perhaps not going to deliver what had been hoped. So it's very disappointing. Obviously, we hope that investment will come into Leicestershire, because it desperately needs it from the government through the county deal, but it is very disappointing that there has been this setback on the county deal that has been set out today. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I call Mr Hunt, please?
Thank you, Chairman. My colleague, I thank you for the information and the references to Her Majesty and so on. The two items I'd like to refer to, the first one is obviously the county deal. Perhaps, you know, I'm a little bit more pleased than Michael, because I actually know something about it now, because a few months ago, I felt that we were being kept in the dark. But I realise now that everybody was in the dark, even your leadership, as it were. But having been left in the dark previously, we're still in the dark, but we just know which part of the dark we're in. And I can understand the difficulties not being a functional economic area, and with competition in a sense with the city. But anyone looking at Leicestershire from outside the county would look at the city, which is a major city, would look at the surrounding area, where all the roads, the rail, the schools interconnect, and say, well, this can't exist one without the other. But I understand the difficulties the leaders in, and I wish him every success in forming a devolved deal. And I just reflect on the fact that whilst the city might not want to have a mayor subject to a superior mayor, it would be somewhat different if Nottingham, Derbyshire, Leicestershire, and so on, had an overarching combined mayor, as indeed that the Mets do at the moment. You've got a metropolitan mayor of the West Midlands, and you've got mayors within that. So there's perhaps some hope for imaginative thinking, if that exists. The second item, I would just like to draw attention to the work that's been done for households at risk of fuel poverty and keeping warm. And if members, no doubt many of whom have residents who are going to be in a difficult position come April and the higher bills and so forth, can have advice from the authority on how to respond to genuine difficulties amongst our residents, that would be really helpful. Okay. Thank you, Chairman.
Could I now call Mr King, please?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you to the leader for his position statement, which is very welcome. What I just want to do is just speak about the net zero and green agenda. This is an issue of great concern and interest to residents in my division in Market Harbour West and Foxton, as I know from the work that we've carried out as the district council as well. Many of the residents in my division are very interested, very knowledgeable on these matters, and I'm sure when the consultation is activated, it will be very helpful if the network that districts offer was utilised to its maximum extent to ensure that residents with very good technical knowledge and passionate interest in these matters were engaged with in the most positive way. I'd also just like to thank the leader for clarifying the point about fuel poverty. Again, this is something that is of interest to many residents in Market Harbour West and Foxton. But also, finally, the storm impact. Again, thank you to the staff who did remove a number of trees in my division, which were blocking roads and everything over the last week or so. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I now call Mr Bray, please?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'm not going to repeat what's been said, but just on the county deal, Nick mentioned that I've been advised to this meeting. I'm very happy to go along with an open mind and engage with it positively. I'm sure Nick will understand that I won't necessarily hold up too many high hopes for it, but we will keep an open mind. Could I just ask Nick if he would like to share with the council exactly what Sir Peter said to him when he went on the phone to him and suggested that there'd be a higher mayor, or is it pre-Watershed, Nick, is his response?
Could I call upon Mr Rushton to respond, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Michael, county deal not a replacement for fair funding, absolutely. And we've never, we've never actually said it was. We still continue the battle for fair funding, as we rightly should, as we, in our opinion, are the worst funded still in the whole of the country. And if we got a county deal, it does not go anywhere near doing the good for the counties proper fair funding would. I won't quote the different councils, different money to, I think we all generally agree that we are the bottom of the heap for funding, apart from, I think it's Windsor and Maidenhead for some weird reason. Elected mayors that you're opposed to, don't forget, Michael, I did say to you that if we had got a directly elected mayor, the directly elected mayor would not detract from your powers or even my powers at the moment as a county leader. All the government said was the elected mayor will take the new powers. So if you had had an elected mayor for Leicestershire and, say, the city, if it ever came to pass, in my view, you would still have a leader of the county council. You'd have a leader of the city council, you'd be a mayor, but it doesn't detract from even your powers as leader of the opposition. Max, thank you very much for your generally positive comments. You can't take away from the fact we have been kept a little bit in the dark. And if I'm honest, it would have been better had we been seeing a white paper before we bid. So we were told what to bid for. We did our absolute best, and even in the Conservative group, there's some opposition to elected mayors. But on balance, members supported going for an elected mayor and going for a county deal, because that is what we thought we could bid for. It's only subsequent to that, we now know they're mentioning functional economic areas. So we've just got to deal with what we've got. Six Seas Mayor, that has been mentioned. That has been mentioned by a Member of Parliament in Leicestershire, no names, no pact, well, but we'll have to wait and see. And if a Six Seas Mayor is on the table, I'll have to bring about eight of the group and then to council. But don't forget, I've got a directly elected mayor in the city who's not interested in any sort of mayor above him, let alone a Six Seas Mayor. As you know, Max, he's a Labour guy, but he doesn't particularly get on well with Nottingham. They've always type of taken over everything in the East Midlands Nottingham have. So he's not keen on a Six Seas Mayor either. But if that was the only deal, and it came with money and power, of course, we will have to consider it, and the government will have to decide what it's going to do about a directly elected mayor in the city. Phil, Blake's your man for anything green. Apparently, he represents somewhere in harbour similar to you do, so I suggest you have a word with Blake. And Stuart, it was a private conversation with Peter. It's not really to be bandied around here. You know I'm relatively good friends with him despite him being an opposition politician. And in all honesty, I can see his argument. You know, everybody in the city's Labour bar one person. Why, in all honesty, would he want what would possibly be a Conservative mayor above him? So that is where I left it. I mean, I can't compel him to join. I don't think the government can compel him to join. So if he's willing to work with us on some other sort of deal with the government, I'm a great believer in willing horses and going with him and also with Rutland to see if something can be cobbled together that gets as close to what Delug and the Treasury wants. And that is where we are, and that is the only thing at the moment I can aim for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Rushton. Now we move on to the lead member for highways and transport, and I invite Mr O'Shea to make his position statement. Mr O'Shea.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to cover the recent storm damage. As the leader mentioned, over the past few days, the county has experienced three major storms, Dudley, Eunice, and Franklin. Gosh knows where these names come from, but they certainly deliver high winds. Over this period, we've had additional highways cruze out to help deal with the situation. Our teams have responded to 176 trees down, as well as a number of flood-related issues. Over 350 inquiries have been dealt with over this period. The staff involved worked tirelessly over this period, including 24/7 over the weekend, and in very difficult circumstances. They have shown a real commitment to get the job done, and I would like to acknowledge their hard work on behalf of this council. their hard work on behalf of this council. The Members' Highway Fund. 498 requests have now been received from all 55 members for works under the Members' Highway Fund. 182 requests are currently in the processing stage, 33 are with members to sign off and to date, 108 jobs have been assigned for delivery. This work is continuing at a pace with officers supporting members in finalising their projects for delivery and programming works. No new requests are being accepted for the current financial year. However, to reassure members, new requests can be submitted for the next round of funding. Any agreed works that cannot be carried out by the end of March will be delivered in the new financial year. A more streamlined process is being developed for us for the next round. This will start an online application process followed up by individual meetings with officers to discuss potential requests. As you know, the Members' Highway Fund has been a new initiative for us all and the department is working hard to get this year's schemes off the ground. Our communities are very happy, I understand, from the work that is being done by members and the team. We will ensure that all on the front, we will ensure that we are always on the front foot for the forthcoming financial year to help members with this scheme. SEN, School Transport Digital Application Process. I'm pleased to advise that parents now have the ability to apply for SEN transport online. The new system went live on February the 10th and I can report we've had our first compliment from new members of the public on how easy it is to use and how effective the system is working the following week. We've also had positive comments on Facebook. Along with our ICT colleagues, we will continue to progress and deliver similar initiatives to improve our customer service and I would like to thank all officers involved. A Recruitment Event. Across highways and transport, we are experiencing significant problems recruiting to vacancies. As part of our work to address this, we are holding a recruitment event at County Hall on the 3rd of March. This has been run in partnership with Reed and is specifically looking to generate interest in roles across highways and transport as well as our waste operation. The communication supporting this event included targeting hard-to-reach communities such as people with disabilities and Black and Asian and multi-ethnic audiences with the object of not only getting good candidates into the department but helping us increase diversity across the workforce. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr O'Shea. Mr Mulaney, would you wish to comment on this?
Just to obviously say that glad that all members have now contributed to the Members' Highway Fund and have their bids in and obviously we continue to support that going forward and obviously we support also the work that was done during the recent storm damage. Thank you.
Could I now call Mr Hunt, please?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, to thank, to thank Ozzy for his hard work of the series. Been a taxing role in the new council and everything seems to be okay. The Scrutiny Commission heard that the Member Highways Fund was funded for this current year, but after that, there's no funding for the scheme. So my question is a genuine one, whether the Member Highway Fund will cease after its second year, as indeed there is no funding attached to the MTFS. Secondly, pleased to hear that we're recruiting people. If the department wants any help from me, they could always come and ask me because, as you know, I'm very helpful to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Could I now call Mrs Hack, please?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Just to concur what's been said, to thank colleagues with regards to all the effort and the energy that's gone in to support the crews around the recent storm damage. Just really quickly on the SEN and digital transport application process, I'm really pleased to hear that we're, we're trying to make it as easy as possible for families to apply, certainly thanking, considering the questions I put forward a couple of meetings ago. So I'm really pleased that that has taken a real step forward. Secondly, on the recruitment event, one of the things that, that I, you know, I've noted in here that we're trying to reach groups that are generally harder to reach in the recruitment market and would really hope that we're looking at ways in which we can look at our job descriptions to make them more accessible. In fact, the onboarding processes that we expect people to engage with can be very difficult if you've got disabilities or English is not your first language. So I was wondering if we could see some progress there, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I call on Mr O'Shea to respond, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. In relation to Mr Hunt's question, at the present time, with the financial situation, we're not in a position to guarantee moving it into the third year. However, we will look to see if we can do, as we always do try to improve things with the council. I can, I can assure members that you will have a carryover period from what you didn't spend this year into next year so that you've not lost that. And thank you for your comments, Mr Hunt, and for your offer to assist. Mrs Hack, thank you for your comments and I do appreciate your comments and officers will take note of your request. And thank Mr Mulaney for his comments as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, we now move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Report to the Cabinet. Right, Item Number Seven, Agenda Item Number Seven, Report of the Cabinet. A Medium Term Financial Strategy, 2022/23, 2025/26. I invite Mr Brecon to move the motion and Mr Shepherd to second. Mr Brecon, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I like Nick's description of sinking the battleship, but I'll try not to sink the battleship. This was compared to my 10 minutes in the sun, so it's sunshine outside, so I'll try and make it sunny at the least. Members, Leicestershire County Council continues to operate in an extremely challenging financial climate. In excess of £230 million worth of savings have been delivered since 2010, 2011. Unless service demand reduces or extra funding is found, the coming years will be very difficult. The level of savings required are not what any of us want to see, but it does allow us to allocate the maximum level of resources to be directed at the services that our residents value and depend on. These are challenges being faced by all 150 upper-tier authorities. Leicestershire has historically managed better than most by facing our challenges in a rational, considered way and by sticking to medium-term financial planning. Strong leadership throughout has put us in a good position where we can carefully plan and consider savings. Several councils are not currently coping well and without extra funding, we'll be in serious financial and operational difficulties. These currently include Croydon, Slough, Birmingham and Nottingham. The recently updated Sipfer Resilience Index supports this in that Leicestershire County Council has been classified as low risk for 11 out of the 16 indicators. Only one category is high risk relating to our high levels of service growth, which we are fully aware of. Our four-year plan shows the pressures on both our revenue and capital budgets. Additional demand for social care and special educational needs and disabilities, SEND, support combined with inflation is driving up costs by £160 million. This made up of 88 million which is service demand and 72 million in inflation costs with also the national living wage which is driving increases in suppliers' charges and national public sector pay rises. Demand for infrastructure investment continues to grow, bringing with its funding risks as developers and government want to cap their liability and construction risk being inevitable with major schemes. This is especially true in light of the currently inflationary pressures and shortages in the supply industry and the construction industry. The County Council has historically been one of the lowest-funded authorities and continues to campaign for a fairer funding deal and recently leading the formation of the F20 Group. The group is made up of those authorities who have higher levels of council tax and lower levels of core spending power. As an example of the perverse differentials between areas, if Leicestershire was funded at the same level as Surrey, it would be £150 million a year better off and it would be £292 million better off if it was funded at the same level as Camden in London. Can it be right that someone living in a band C property within Leicestershire has to pay more council tax than those living in the most expensive band H properties in Westminster? The continued use of outdated formulas to distribute new grants is further compelling the inequalities of the existing system. This has to be addressed by the government as a matter of urgency. The MTFS presented now shows a balanced budget for 2022/23 and there's an £8 million forecast gap in 2023/24, rising to nearly £40 million by 2025/26. We will continue to work with our MPs to fight for fair funding. We are pleased that the recent settlement highlights that local government reform is back on the agenda. Even so, the MTFS is prudent and is based on the assumption that no significant initial funding will be available in this current MTFS period. So looking at growth, we need to make savings here as resources are simply not keeping up with demand and cost increases. This MTFS includes inflation of 72 million, which is primarily driven by the national living wage that is forecast to increase from the current level of £8.91 to £10.50 by 2024. The main drivers of growth continue to be social care and children and family services with a growth of £25 million. The number of social care placements continues to rise steeply coupled with increasing costs putting pressure on social worker caseloads. Adult social care with growth of £35 million, largely the result of an aging population with increasing care needs and a growing number of people with learning difficulties. By 2041, we anticipate that the number of over 80s in this county is set to double. Since the reforms in 2013, the increase in children eligible for SEND support has continually increased and at a faster rate here than nationally. The demand for SEND support is forecast to continue to rise despite significant investment in this service that will deliver £14 million of annual savings and also an additional funding of £22 million. There is forecast to be a shortfall of £62 million by the end of this MTFS period. That is cumulative cash above the grant that we receive. Looking at savings over the next four years, County Council here will save £94 million, of which £40 million has been identified for our services, £14 million of cost avoidance required to manage the high-needs budget, £40 million still to be identified as part of a range of initiatives to close the financial gap, which will not be easy. We aim to emulate the success of the adult social care target operating model work with a defining children and family services for the future programme, which will deliver significant savings and expected to be the reason of £12 million and improve the quality to those services. We continue to maximize efficiency savings. Of the £40 million of identified savings over the next four years, £28 million are through efficiency savings and £11 million from increased income rather than our service reductions. Looking at resources, it's always regrettable that we have to raise council tax, but in reality, there's little choice in the matter. Without these additional resources, essential services would suffer. The proposal is for a core tax rise of 1.99% plus 1% for the adult social care precept, a total of 2.99%. This equates to £3.53 a month for band D property and will generate to this council £10 million per year, primarily to be invested in supporting our vulnerable people. Our public understand the issues we face and highlight and this is confirmed by those who responded to the MTFS consultation, which showed a good level of support for our proposals, including the council tax increase. It is recognised by many residents and they will still have a hard time with cost of living increases at the moment and we need to repay them as a county council by continuing to deliver services efficiently and effectively. It is interesting to note that the council tax is the only significant lever available to the County Council to raise additional money to fund these vital services while balancing the budget. It is interesting to note that Leicestershire County Council received a £100 million revenue support grant in 2012/13 to assist with this and with the funding of its services, yet received nothing since 2018/19. It is also anticipated that inflation will exceed 7% in this spring. Finally, looking at capital, the capital programme totals £515 million over the four years of this MTFS, including £129 million in 2022/23. This represents the council's investment in growth, service improvement and investment to save projects, including £33 million of forward funding at developer contributions at risk. The programme funded by partners, primarily government, at £237 million, County Council resources at £111 million, revenue contributions arising from our good financial management, capital receipts of £24 million. The funding required of £143 million will be temporarily funded from internal cash balances until repaid by developer contributions or by other means. It is a comprehensive programme and includes £221 million of roads and highways infrastructure. It includes £87 million for schools, the majority, £63 million will be invested in new places to meet the demand in our growing county. £67 million for continued investment in new workplaces and industrial units through the Corporate Asset Investment Fund. This will support the local economy, reduce the need for County Council to make savings through this reliable income stream. £34 million investment in adult and social care to boost accommodation and children's to boost accommodation that supports people to live in more appropriate settings, including more independent living. This does include a figure of £18 million from the Disabilities Facilities Grant. We've got £12 million for specific carbon and energy reduction projects which will generate efficiency savings for the County Council and also recycling and waste initiatives to improve how we deal with our household waste. A few smaller additions which will assist all members and their communities include the Members' Highway Fund, which is continuing for the second year. We will look at funding that in future, allowing £1.4 million to be invested in our communities by our Members' Initiatives. We have added an additional £150,000 a year for the Shire Grants, which is a much-valued scheme that delivers for Leicestershire communities. We have also put funding aside for our first tree nursery. I hope this is the first of many which will help underpin our manifesto commitment to plant 700,000 trees in the county. Members can be assured that we will continue to work with our MPs who are fully aware of the need to press for our fair funding system and it needs to be up to date and fit for purpose. It needs to allow us to deliver all of our statutory duties that we are responsible for as a county council. I will finish by saying this is a positive budget for the residents of Leicestershire. Again, I'd like to thank and put on record my thanks to Chris, Declan, Gordon and Jane and the whole corporate resources team for the work that has once again gone into producing the MTFS here today as presented. I am happy to move the motions eight to Q listed in the order paper, which includes at B the revenue budget for 2022/23 totaling £471.7 million as set out in the various penises. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Brecon. Could I now call on Mr Shepherd to second, please?
Thank you, Chairman, and I'm very pleased to second the motion in my same old, same old way, as the leader would put it, I think. I want to echo Lee's thanks to the excellent corporate resources team led by Chris Tambini for all their hard work. And also, I want to thank councillors too, both Cabinet and Scrutiny, for the work they've done preparing these papers. For me, the heart of the matter is summed up by a table which is actually on page 34 of the MTFS Report to Cabinet on November 2nd. And that simply shows the shortfalls in years two, three and four of our four-year MTFS. That is the heart situation that we face. Some very hard work will be needed by all of us to address that problem and that's against the background of the savings made since 2010/11. Lee has given stacks of detail. I can add a little bit more, but he's given you a lot already, but just to add a little bit, the proposal for SEND, SEND support, involve reducing costs by investing to create more places locally. Both adult social care and children's social care, highly important services that it falls to us to provide, are expected to require cost increases of £10 million each next year when you add in the effect of inflation. We all know across the country how badly eating and drinking out has been affected for everybody and we're an exception in our creative services totality. for everybody, and we're an exception in our creative services totality. But it isn't all, you know, just bad news. We must see our situation in the round, to be fair to ourselves and our residents as well. There are, you know, some things Lee mentioned, some seemingly small but important things, like the extra money for the Shire Grants, like the tree nursery, for example. Lee's referred to our investment in growth, in service improvements and investor save projects. But, here's the but coming up, we shall need to work on the funding for our capital programme. There's no escaping that. And also, persisting in our argument, here is some more really same old, same old, persisting in our argument for fair funding for our county. An argument going on for quite a long time, but we must just keep on at it. I mean, one good thing I think we can all see is the F twenty group being formed. That is, I think, a step forward. Clearly, it's a cliche, but it's true, that no tax rise is welcome, but the tax rise proposed is needed so we can go on providing the services for the people, people out there whose half we are here. That's our job, I think. It seems, no, didn't I think, the government actually assumes we shall make the maximum tax increase when they refer to our core spending power. Is it a question of really of Hobson's Choice? So, scrutiny colleagues have given proposals rigorous attention, and the request for extra Shire Grants has been met. The proposals really are responsible and prudent. We've all had a chance to have our say about them, and I therefore urge all members, all members, to support them.
Thank you, Mr Shepherd. Could I now call Mr Malaney, please, to speak?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. First, if I say thank you to all the officers and everyone else who's been involved in the preparation of the MTFS. It's obviously a very challenging time at the moment. Leicestershire is the worst-funded county council in the country by this Conservative government, which is why we're in this difficult situation, and that's despite electing all Conservative MPs and having a Conservative majority council for twenty years. We continue to be bottom of the league for county councils for fair funding. So we hear much from the government about levelling up. Well, if anywhere did deserve to be leveled up, it is Leicestershire, yet we are still waiting for it and still waiting for fairer funding. The government often talks, ministers, about how the spending power of local authorities are increasing, as if that is something that we should be grateful to them for. But as is shown in the table on page thirty-eight, what we have seen is increasingly the burden for raising revenue is being moved to the hard-pressed taxpayers of Leicestershire. So in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, less than two-thirds of the finances came from council tax. Now, for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, it's over three-quarters of it is from council tax. And the reality is, we have a cost of living crisis at the moment. Inflation is at a thirty-year high, interest rates and mortgage rates, thirty-year high, energy costs are rocketing and increasing. Pensions triple lock has been frozen, which means older people's incomes will effectively take a hit. The national insurance is rising. The income tax thresholds are being frozen, which means more people will be brought into paying income tax, and we've had a universal credit cut. So there's been a whole snowstorm of hits to people's incomes through various charges and taxes and cuts. And on top of that, they're going to be hit by a forty-two pounds increase in council tax band D happening because the government is still not delivering fair funding. And in the long run, we face thirty-nine and a half million pounds deficit that's still there for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Will fair funding be delivered to rescue us from this situation? It seems unlikely. In the document on page forty, paragraph fifty-four, it says that effectively we cannot expect fair funding to be delivered, that the government's priorities, as we know, is what is known as the red wall area. It's not really Leicestershire, and unfortunately, Leicestershire is consistently taken for granted by the government, and our endless pleas for extra support and fair funding are unfortunately ignored, have been ignored, and according to this document, we can expect them to be ignored in the future as well. So in the absence of what is increasingly becoming close to a miracle of fair funding being delivered, we're going to have to somehow bridge the gap of thirty-nine and a half million pound by twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. And given over the years, there have been substantial efficiency savings, the rooms for making more efficiency savings will become tougher and tougher, and therefore it's likely that people will have to face either cutbacks to important local services to meet this gap and/or increases in council tax in future years at a time when they'll be going through a very difficult cost of living crisis in the next few years. Residents in Leicestershire have been placed bottom of the table for funding from this Tory government. Fair funding has not been delivered and seems extremely unlikely that it will ever be delivered. Despite people here electing all Tory MPs, despite them electing a Conservative county council for many years, the reality is that they are being taken for granted and the government is not delivering us the support that we need. So as we go through this financial crisis, people in Leicestershire face a phenomenally tough time, and sadly, with the huge deficit that we face over the coming years, it seems as if it will continue to be a difficult time. And until the government delivers fair funding, which sadly, it doesn't look like it's going to do, residents here are going to continue to be let down and taken for granted by this government.
Thank you. Could I now call Mr Hunt, please?
Thank you, Chair. And I thank the officers working throughout the year and delivering this budget, including Lee Brecken, who has, no doubt, worked extremely hard on this. It's a bit more than ten years since we've had a Labour MP in the county, though they all seem to be Conservative at the moment. These are ten years in which, in which we've suffered from this Conservative government. Each year, another turn of the screw, asking us to forego more money from central government, and their controlling hand on council tax. Once again, we propose to go to the maximum that we can with that referendum because simply government is taking more money and reducing our power to serve the people of Leicestershire. On top of that, the government is awarding a rebate to all our council taxpayers, which will come back to bite us next year when they find they have an even higher increase in charges. So it's a budget which is made in government for local authorities to follow, which is why, of course, we're looking for more devolution. We face huge cost pressures and significant risk, and it's the risk I want to just talk about this afternoon. As the report says, there are uncertainties and predominantly driven by government. These are summarized in paragraph one-five-six, which lists the main risks and examples. So for example, the threat to lower Better Care Fund, and another example is the loss of trading income from school meals across the board. Here are the risks. But I picked out one statement that implies a question which simply has no answers, and it's the, it's the line which reads, overspends such as those experienced in social care in recent years will put the county council in a very difficult position with a need to make immediate offsetting savings. In recent years, we've suffered overspends, particularly on social care, but also in children's services, throughout the year. And yet, this year, we're also being told that immediate offsetting savings will have to be made, presumably implying from that department. And we'll be watching throughout the year to see how overspends are dealt with, because there will be overspends due to, for example, the rise in children receiving care, and that's an essential service for the children, for society and under statute. And there's little comfort with the risks contingency of eight million pounds for this next year. The council spends sixty million pounds each month. Inflationary pressures for fuel and energy alone could wipe that out at a stroke. Then there's the growing aging population and the large increase in school-aged children, both putting huge demands on social care and S E N D services. As far as the reforms we're looking forward to from government, we expect those in business rates, social care, school funding, but there are no guarantees, as the report says, that they will actually be beneficial to us, reflecting what Mr Maloney has said. The Cabinet is asking us not just for this year, but for approval to the estimates for next year and the following two years after that, but none of them balance. And for the first time next year, the year after we're pursuing today, will not balance. That's the first year in which we've had a shortfall that Richard Shepherd has referred to. On the capital budget, it's usually occasion to hear Mr Shepherd waxing lyrical about the spending we're making. But this year, we're facing projects which will demand developer contributions which have been scarce this year. So there's the risk there of not getting those development contributions that we have expected in the past. And there's also the risk that land sales, which we're proposing, won't get through the planning permissions in sufficient time for the capital programme. So finally, on council tax, which the Cabinet is recommending the maximum, two point nine nine percent. I was struck by the sentence in the report on the consultation that apparently around fifty-two percent of residents supported a council tax of three percent or more, taken straight from the document. Whoever wrote that, I can't believe that Cabinet read it, because it's patent, if anybody is in touch with their residents, that fifty-two percent, more than half of residents, are looking forward to a three percent plus council tax. In fact, they only found sixty-nine people out of the, what, seven hundred thousand people in the county who were prepared for that increase, and fifty of those in the survey were employees. So we've got to sharpen up on our consultation, and then we perhaps might realise, some of you will realise perhaps for the first time, there is a cost of living crisis, and it's out there, and three percent on council tax was very, very hard to follow, to meet. So we recognize that this budget is made in Westminster, not in County Hall fundamentally. And you have our sympathy, but you can't receive our support. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I now call Mr O'Shea, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Highways, transport and flooding has a fifty-one million revenue allocation for the coming year, and overall, anticipated growth of five point seven million and savings of two point two million over the MTFS period. The main area of pressure is the increasing cost of SCN transport. To combat this, the department are undertaking an extensive review of how we deliver, as well as our working practices and working with colleagues in Children's and Families' Department to seek to manage the demand of this service. We anticipate delivering a savings of one point one million from this work. Other savings will be delivered through a number of efficiencies across highways, including how we service our small vehicle fleet. I am proud to say, even with all these savings, highways and transport have a four-year capital programme of two hundred and twenty-one million, which includes delivery of the MMDR North, East and South, as well as the A five-one-one corridor scheme. The Hinkley-Hub junction improvements will be on site later this spring. This follows on from our successful delivery of the M one junction twenty-three, twenty-six million pounds worth of spending, and the A forty-six Anstey ten million pound scheme. Over the life of the MTFS, sixty-six million will be invested in highway maintenance and asset management. This area continues to be a big challenge for us, and in recognition of this, councillors made available an additional eight million pound for highway works over the next two years. This will fund the coming year's Members' Highway Fund, along with much-needed additional maintenance activities across the county. Members will know that we are one of the lowest-funded councils across the country. We've all heard that this afternoon. But I am very proud with the services that this council, our officers, deliver to our communities, and I will support the MTFS. Thank you, Chairman.
Mr Rushton, please.
Chairman, thank you very much. So you've heard from Ozzy. We are still delivering, and it goes across the piece, you know, we're delivering in children, we're delivering in adults, we're certainly trying our best to deliver in highways. And despite, and I do admit, the fair funding, we have been battling with it for a long, long time, and now we've got another battle to join, which is the County Deal. But remember, we still balance our books every single year. Despite what the numbers look, we will balance our books, and we always deliver on our manifesto. And as you rightly pointed out, that sometimes these things are tough to deliver. I like to think we're a sensible, sensitive, serious administration, and we're certainly not afraid of making difficult decisions when they are needed, and that is why we're in the relatively fortunate position that we are. We'll continue to battle for the fair funding, and I'm sure the electorate of Leicestershire appreciate what we do. They certainly have done for the years since I've been leader, and last year we secured our biggest majority we ever had, and we were battling for fair funding, fair funding then, and now we're battling for County Deal. I promised this council, and we promised in our election manifesto, that we'll always do the best with the money we have and protect the vulnerable, and this budget does that. So we're proud of our budget, we're proud of what we deliver, we appreciate that we're disappointed that we're still bottom of the pile for funding, but bearing in mind where we are with the money we've got, we should be proud of this budget, and I do urge all of you to support it. And if you can't bring yourself to support it, Max, abstain, but don't vote against it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Could I now call Mrs Radford, please?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. The proposed growth reflects changes in demand for services such as increased numbers of service users and the number of high-cost care packages, in particular those related to older adults and learning disabilities. This amounts to thirty-five million over the next four years. The overall number of service users being supported across residential care, home care, supported living, direct payments and community life choices from January twenty through to October twenty-one has significantly increased. Typical growth would be approximately one to one point five per annum. However, the current number of service users supported shows growth around five percent. There were some early indications that growth in service users was starting to reduce, but this was before the latest wave of Covid nineteen. During twenty twenty-one, there have been significant changes in demand due to the Covid nineteen pandemic, mainly driven by the current hospital discharge process, which has meant an increase in the average number of home care hours provided, the increased number of short-term resident the increased number of short term residential care places and an increase in number of service users who would normally pay for their own care. Another key driver is the cost of providing services, which has significantly increased as capacity in the market is limited. There is also a requirement to provide for increased care costs and growth in number of people with learning disability services. During twenty twenty-one, there have been changes in demand due to the Covid nineteen pandemic, mainly driven by the number of patients being discharged through the transforming care programme with high costs, transferring from hospital and residential care into more independent living and the number of young people transitioning from the children's to adult services. There are a number of demand management activities which include regular oversight of cost of care packages, a scheme of delegation which manages level of spend and accountability at all levels across the service, alongside benchmarking against national population statistics and regular budget monitoring. The departmental management team also maintain oversight of the quality and sustainability of the care provider market, including impact of changes in demand for care homes and home care. This has resulted in the forecast overspend in this financial year reducing from over thirteen million to less than four million. However, the significant pressure on next year's budget and the following three years of the M T F S period remains. Alongside the growth requirement, the department has significantly savings and efficiency targets to meet of sixteen million over the M T F S period. We will continue to manage demand and promote people's independence through investment in care technology, independent living and new ways of working, as well as maximising service efficiency. This has been a challenging year for the department and I would like to express my thanks and gratitude to the officers of the council and all those who have worked in adult social care across the county for their continued dedication and commitment in the face of significant adversity. And in fact, over the last couple of weeks, I've been giving out prizes for people who've been nominated for their care services. So I really think, you know, this department really does a good job and thank you very much.
Thank you. Could I now call Mr Meyer, please?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'll try not to go over things that the people have said already, but we can appreciate that all our residents are under a lot of financial stress and unfortunately, April onwards, it just seems to it will get worse. But it's a very good report to read, this finance report, it's easy to follow. And I say it's good and easy in the way that it's presented. And I thank Chris Timbini and his team of officers for presenting it in such a way that the explanations are clear and we can follow one paragraph into the other because we're not all clued up in finances and sometimes it can feel like we're wading through treacle. I just want to say that there are some concerns around the budget and the M T F S presented to us. I want to focus on the changes in the draft budget to the actual budget. And that's highlighted on paragraph thirty-two, which is page thirty-four in the report. It seems the government have actually given us a settlement or extra money over and above what we initially thought. I think we thought of eight million pounds originally that was pencilled in, but the actual amount achieved was considerably more than that forecast. And it's detailed, all detailed in that table there. The council tax collection fund is forecast to be better as well. So less people than we thought were struggling to pay their council tax during the pandemic. Something to be expected considering the considerable amounts and the billions actually that money pumped, the government pumped into the economy through furlough, business loans and grants and such so. So far, so good and all positive, which, you know, is quite good because we don't want people struggling unnecessarily. More money available to us to provide services and maybe, just maybe, not raise council tax so much, if at all. So if you're looking at that figure, at that chart, you're thinking, actually, we're getting more money from government. Maybe we don't have to raise council tax because actually the gain is more than we thought they'd give us. After all, the three percent raise in council tax just gives us over ten million pound. But the government has given us more than that. But as we've seen, we're taking the full two point nine nine percent. However, the table in paragraph thirty-two illustrates why we're taking that two point nine nine percent as well. Because you get to a line that reads equalisation earmarked fund. And I haven't got a clue what that means, but I think that's just a fun to say, actually, we're going to bang that money like the Police and Crime Commissioner did, bang that money and save it for another day. That's what I think it says. So hopefully somebody can explain it to me more clearly. The table on paragraph forty-two shows our core spending power and Mr Maloney talked about that. Over the last ten years, well, since two thousand and fifteen, actually, it's gone from sixty-six percent to seventy-five percent what council taxpayers are paying towards the services of running this council. It shows a continuing shift of taxation onto local shoulders. It's not from central government anymore. You know, we, the residents, are paying for running Leicestershire County Council and more so each and every year. Another point I want to highlight is the assumption that we will take the two point nine nine percent council tax this year, but only one point nine nine percent in the subsequent years of the M T F S. It's saying that we're not going to take the social care precept, which is odd really because the national insurance increases that are supposed to help social care won't actually come and support us for another three years, I think. So we're not going to get any money from there. So if we're not taking the extra one percent each and every year, is the gap in adult social care only going to get wider? And I want to touch on adult social care because I think we had a very good scrutiny meeting regarding the budget. It was open and it was transparent. But one thing I did highlight, and I wanted it to go to scrutiny really, but it didn't go, is the six million pounds that we're assuming that the NHS is going to bail us out for. They bailed us out this year. And that's why it's narrowed from thirteen million now to four million each and every year of the four year of the M T F S. And there's no agreement there, it's just a gentleman's agreement, I think. Six million pounds this year, six million pounds next year and for four years. So if we didn't get that, we're already eighty-one million pounds of savings we need to find. That'll be another twenty-four million pounds on top. I'm sure the NHS will come through because if it is a gentleman's agreement, they will come through. But if they don't, for whatever reason, they have service and cost pressures, then that's another twenty-four million pounds worth of savings we need to find as well. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Could I now call Mr Galton, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. Make a few comments on what is this, by my count, the twelfth year of austerity that the council's faced. And I would like to pay tribute to the detail in this report because it's all there, two hundred pages long. You know, you can find everything you need to know in that. It really is full of the detail and it is actually a good read as well. But I really think that this budget is characterised by uncertainty and risk, more of it. And as I say, this has been going on for twelve years now and we don't need to, seem to be any nearer the end. There's no light at the end of the tunnel. And as the report at paragraph twenty-three tells us, services will never return to normal. And the scale of the challenge seems to be more significant. It seems to be getting worse, not better. The gap has risen from twenty-three million last year to thirty-nine million. And this is only balanced for one year. Normally, we managed to balance the M T F S at least year two, maybe even year three. We are only achieving it, as I say, for one year. And there are major threats looking to us, whatever government decides to do about service reviews and reforms and so on. For example, if the living wage went up, now that's something we'd want to support, but that will have a massive impact on the County Council if that was to happen. And inflation, members have talked about inflation. Inflation, you know, inflation is something you thought about in the seventies. Now it seems to be coming back again and could be extremely serious for the provision of local government services. So yes, we were given some extra money and set out in paragraph seventy-three, the services grant, four point three million. But this report also tells us that the forthcoming increase in the employers' national insurance will have to find three point two million to cope with that. So really, we've only actually got an extra one point two million. And it's important that we take the thing in the round and look at what, you know, the government's giving with one hand and taking it back with the other, causing us to have to spend to balance the books. And the high needs block remains a major concern in terms of the forecast. Yes, it's come down, but it's still a massive amount of money that really ought to be the responsibility of central government and not put on to local authorities to find. And so as far as I can see, Mr Chairman, we continue to be dealt a bad hand, a bad hand by the government. Yes, there are some good things in here, a bit of extra funding for Shire Grants, the waiving of closures, highway closures for the Platinum Jubilee. That's all very welcome, but it really does signify how little we can do in terms of improving services, how little room there is for manoeuvre. Now, paragraph thirty-four talks about service reforms that are coming. Let's just have a quick look at SEND. We're still waiting, still waiting for what the government's going to do. Social care reform, still waiting. Money's initially going to the NHS to address the backlog of waiting lists and so on. And it could be some time before we get any money. And as the report clearly says, we're going to have to sort out paying the people who provide these services and training them better. And also, we may be paying, people who have to pay their charges may end up paying less. So it's difficult to see how we're actually going to square the circle even with that. And then, of course, today, we've been told that actually, the Mayoral issue, that may not deliver anything particularly significant for us either. And I do think, in closing, the most important paragraph, and it was there last year and members of the administration didn't really want to respond to it or talk about it, but it is there and yes, you can say that accountants are miserable by the trade as a group. But it very clearly says in there that there will be, most likely outcome is there will be no benefit to Leicestershire from the funding reforms. And it's time, we will have to find the solutions to these financial problems ourselves as the County Council. So I say to Mr Brecken, in everything he said this afternoon and to the leader as well, is it not time to level with the people of Leicestershire that actually, all these things are unlikely significantly to benefit the county? And that really, we're going to have to find a solution to this, most likely, without significant additional funding from the government. And that just underlines the situation we're in. I hope we can, I hope the MPs do actually eventually stand up and say enough is enough. But until someone draws a line in the sand, I can't see how we get out from being dealt a bad hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I now call Mrs Taylor?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. And I was found Chris Timbini quite jolly, not miserable at all. So maybe you should have a little sip of that energy drink there, cheer yourselves up a bit. So on to children's and families, our savings, we're looking at fourteen point five million over the four years and that includes savings of twelve point three million from our defining children and family services for the future programme. And this programme works to aim to improve outcomes for children, young people and their families whilst delivering significant financial savings. And we will on track with that work with our partners, Newton, in achieving those savings. So I'm fairly confident that we will get there. On to growth, we've got twenty-five point one million of growth. This is mainly due to nineteen point three million for the pressures on social care placements. Budgets arising from increased numbers of looked after children and five point six million for increased social care workloads. We're still not sure about the longer term effects of the pandemic that will have on children and families. So I don't think we're going to see that for the next sort of year, eighteen months. So, you know, we really are on a critical point with children and family services. We also have a capital budget of ninety-four million over the next four years. That's mainly from external funding. And the priorities for this will be the school place planning, investment in SEND as part of the high needs development plans on our investor save schemes. On to our school budget, so we continue to set the Avalor Schools budget as a net nil budget at local authority level. However, in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, there's a funding gap of nine point one billion on the high needs block, which will have to be carried forward as an overspend against the grant. Adding this to the deficit for the previous two years, the deficit is over twenty-six million at the end of this financial year. And the projection at the end of the M T F S in twenty twenty-six, the deficit is estimated to be over sixty-two million. So this is a position that's already mentioned that the council cannot continue with and central government need to look at this funding very closely and very quickly. There are a number of views ongoing at the moment and remain hopeful that reform comes quickly and not only reduces the financial burden for local authorities but provides better outcomes for all our children. I just want to finish by saying no one here wants to raise the council tax any more than the bare minimum. We know families are struggling with cost of living rises and times are hard at the moment. But we must support our most vulnerable residents and keep our children safe. We must maintain our frontline services. We will continue to press the government and lobby our MPs for fair funding to ensure we can continue to provide for our residents and ensure this county is funded fairly.
Thank you. Mr Payne, please?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I want to resist the temptation to get engaged in a debate on the macroeconomics of this country. We're off the back of a pandemic, there are some geopolitical issues, some critical issues that are contributing towards what I think everyone accepts is an energy crisis or at least the horizon of an energy crisis. And for my part, I don't think any party, let alone the Conservative Party, have not acknowledged that there are some very challenging economic times coming forward, whether you call that a cost of living crisis or not. We're all in the same boat, to coin that phrase. So, you know, these are difficult times and at the end of the day, L C C, as Deborah Taylor's just said, supports some of the most vulnerable people in the county. So whilst no one welcomes a council tax increase, it's necessary for this council to do what's right. And one thing I think we can acknowledge is that conservative councillors are prudent with the financial stewardship of our councils. And we've proven that year after year after year and we'll do the same this year. Moving on to my own department, which is the Environment and Waste Department. Just to give you a bit of a synopsis, we spend about thirty-two million pounds a year and we provisioned one point seven million pounds worth of efficiency savings within the M T F S. So most of those efficiencies and savings will come from new waste procurement contracts and dealing in a different way with our waste disposal. But of course, we'll continue to drive those efficiencies that Lee Brecken spoke about. But also, like everyone else, we'll have to focus on reducing our energy consumption and for us, investing in renewable energy. Not only did the leader just say that we stand by our manifesto commitments, we will deliver on being a green council. We are a green council and front and centre of our manifesto is to support the environment and the green agenda. And that includes looking at how we deal with our own energy consumption and what we do in terms of investing in renewable energy. In terms of growth, again, we're not immune to some of the wider challenges out in the economy. There are shortage of H G V drivers and we're going to have to invest here as a county council to attract H G V drivers to keep our services running. And therefore, we've got to provision for a market premier to do just that. In terms of carbon reduction, we have over four hundred vehicles in Ozzy O'Shea's department, the Highways and Transport Department. And we're looking at converting a lot of those vehicles to hydro-treated vegetable oil from diesel. That will save us over seventeen hundred tonnes of carbon emissions and that equates to about sixty-nine percent of our overall fleet emissions. So some positive, for small amounts of money, there is some positive growth there. And finally, I could have quite easily spoke to the leader's statement, but it's about our tree programme. And members will know that we've now published our website. It's at leicestershire.gov.uk forward slash trees. And I'll give you a plethora of information about what we're doing, but it also has an interactive map. So can I encourage members to spread the word that where you know about tree planting in your area, please encourage organisations and people in your area to log that tree planting because we're on a mission here, we're doing it exceedingly well. Since the interactive map went up, we've got over twenty-two thousand trees logged on there. There are many, many more thousands in the pipeline. So please, can I encourage members to, for the small investment we've made in that website and in this tree programme and the nursery that will underpin the growth of new tree species, can I ask members to spread the word about our interactive map and our website so people can engage in this process? Thank you.
Thank you. Could I now call Mr King, please?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Just to pick up that last point from Mr Payne, I'm pleased to say I did promote that in my leader's statement at Harbour District Council in December. So we've been helping to promote what the County Council's doing. But I just wanted to make a few comments about the M T F S. Thank you to Mr Brecken for his presentation and other comments. Just before I do, I'm right in thinking that between twenty-ten and twenty-fifteen was in fact a coalition government. It wasn't just the Conservatives who were in that government setting the policy agenda, much of which has come home to roost in terms of higher energy much of which has come home to roost in terms of higher energy prices at the moment. And there is a lot, there are clearly going to be some very difficult decisions that we're going to have to make in the future over the period of the MTFS. But unless I've misread this in the documents, whilst there are warnings throughout the report as how difficult that is going to be, nowhere does it say it can't be done. And, you know, if it can't be done, I would have expected the one-five-one officer to have advised us as members of that impossible task ahead. What I do think, though, is that we probably do need to revisit how we're lobbying governments about the fairness of the fair funding and all the things to do with local authority finance. Because the thing that does concern residents in my division is the year-on-year increase of council tax. And whilst, as a percentage, it doesn't sound a lot of money, the fact is, I know from my own bills, as I'm sure we all do, that in the last ten years, the share of council tax has risen by over thirty, that the increase is cumulatively over thirty per cent. And whilst others may have increased their council tax, it is by far and away the lion's share of the money that people have to pay to the collection authorities. Other precepting bodies also add significantly to the burden on residents. And it is something which I'm sure we're all going to get more comments from residents about going forward in the fact that simply keep increasing council tax year on year is, when we have got an affordability issue, cost of living crisis, whatever you want to call it, is going to be difficult for many residents. And potentially, we could see the number of people not paying their council tax and collection action being taken by the collection authorities having to increase as a result. So it is concerning that council tax is having to be increased in the way that it is. But at the moment, I don't see any other alternative. And whilst it goes against my natural inclination, and I'm sure many in our group of not increasing council tax, I don't see a different alternative but to do that. And I obviously will be supporting this budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Could I now call Mr. Murray, please?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Brecken and all the officers for the clear, concise report. It's my first financial report as a county councillor, and it was a pleasure to read. Thank you. I'd like to thank all departments for working within their budgets, done a great job. This budget is prudent, and as the leader says, it protects vulnerable people and delivers services. And I'd like to speak to Mr. Mulaney's comments, who, he said, for twenty years, the people of Leicestershire have been let down by Conservative government and council. Well, we must be doing something right because we keep getting elected. And I know my colleagues just mentioned it, and I don't know if he cribbed off me or if I cribbed off him, but in the last twenty years, there's been a first for me in that we had a coalition with the Lib Dems. And we actually had a deputy prime minister who was a Lib Dem, but he's gone off to be a president somewhere in some far-flung country. So when you come to talk about being let down for the last twenty years, glass houses and stones spring to mind, and this budget gets my support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, I was referring to the county council being run by the Conservatives for twenty years since two thousand and one.
At order, thank you. Can I now call Mr. Bedford, thank you?
Thank you, Chair. And can I assure Mr. Galton that accountants aren't always miserable, just sometimes? And as many people have, thank you, Terry, as many members have already said, my thanks go to Lee and Richard and the finance team for pulling together the MTFS. I know that when you've got a lot of moving parts, it's a really difficult task, and it's a credit to the finance team to be able to present a balanced budget today. Now, I'm a Conservative, and lower taxes are at the core of my beliefs. But I'm also a pragmatist, and this administration has done much over the last two years to support residents of Leicestershire through the pandemic and beyond. We've had schemes like the community pub scheme, school dinners during half-terms, the Shire grants have already been mentioned, and the Covid support grants, to name but a few. And also, as Ozzy mentioned earlier, the Members' Highway Fund has been a real, positively received by residents and members as well. Today's budget will help ensure that those in the most need are protected and continue to be protected through a difficult financial backdrop. It's very easy in politics to carp and criticize, or even, as some of our liberal friends do, sit on the fence and have the leadership to take tough decisions. But it is our responsibility as elected members to pass a balanced budget, and that's what I'll be voting for today.
Thank you. Could I now call Mr. Parton, please?
In the summary, in the Adults and Communities section, it states, a quote, balances the need for sufficient time to identify initiatives that will close the gap without cutting back services excessively. And we can say that the saving required over the course of the MTFS will be sixteen million pounds for adults and communities. And we're going to do this in three ways. We're going to invest in care technology, and bear in mind that with the new tax, national tax, this will fund this. Independent living and maximising service efficiency. Now, it will seem that the only news out of adults and communities is bad. Despite all of this, in this capital programme, social care accommodation will receive investment of thirty-four million pounds. And Mrs. Radford and I have seen many of these. We've spoken about this before. If there are any in your division, you ought to go and see them because this department is doing some amazing work. And members will have had the opportunity to have several briefings about the Adults and Communities department and the financial challenges we're facing. You heard in a briefing about how we're managing the overspend and the immense pressures we're facing. And this week, you'll have heard about the Leicestershire Adult Learning Service. Remember, this department's looking after some of the most ill, the most disabled and most vulnerable people in Leicestershire. Now, to finish, it's been suggested in the course of the debate that there are members here who are seemingly unaware of the cost of living crisis. And there's information that may be unknown, and here it is. All members here in this room are deeply caring individuals. Many members, many who I know, have disabled relatives, ill relatives, and they commit to huge amounts of voluntary work and charity work. The members here are well aware of a cost of living crisis. And this council will always look after our most vulnerable throughout the course of this MTFS. Adults and communities are in a very healthy position in all senses of the word.
Thank you. Mrs. Poznet, please.
Thank you, Chairman. In summary, there are no reductions to the communities' budget, and this is a reflection of how the council value these services and the contribution that they make to supporting the most vulnerable in society and those in greatest need. Additionally, the services are invaluable in promoting self-help and resilience, and thus, in the long term, reduce demand on council services through early intervention and prevention. Now, the investment in the Shire community grants has been mentioned numerous times this afternoon. It was very welcome, very well received, not only in the department, but also in local communities. Because this recognises the importance the council attaches to small grassroots voluntary and community organisations who support the most isolated or disadvantaged in our communities. And these are organisations that would not get grants from elsewhere, but they apply to these and they value these Shire grants. We are also continuing to support the broader voluntary sector, including rural communities, through commissioning infrastructure support so that groups can access financial, HR and legal advice. In recognition of the impact of rising costs on households across the county, the council also continues to support money, debt and welfare advice and provision. For example, the council funds Citizens Advice Bureau services and provides crisis and hardship support, including food, fuel and essential household supplies through local voluntary and community groups. And I'd like to thank this council for giving us the amount of funding that enables us to support so many of these disadvantaged people in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I call Mr. Richardson, please?
Thank you, Chair. I hadn't intended to speak today, even during Mr. Mulaney's normal election rant. I wasn't, and we know how successful his election rants has been in previous elections to be an MP. But what inspired me to get up today, I have to say, was Mr. Galton, with his super metaphors when he was talking about hands of cards. Now, I listened carefully to both opposition groups, and I was sat there thinking, what would I think if I was a resident sitting at home watching this? And I was thinking, well, both groups have actually said, what we don't like is the hand we've been dealt. We don't like the hand we've been dealt. Our leader has been particularly clear in fighting to get us a better hand dealt. But because we're pragmatists and because we're actually in charge, you have to play the hand that's been dealt to you, something I think both the opposition groups have missed. Now, both the opposition groups have stood up and praised the quality of the financial information that's been supplied, all two-hundred-and-sixty-odd pages of it. So they've both admitted that they have all of the same financial information that we have as a lead group. So if I was a resident sitting at home, I'd be thinking, well, they've had all the information. They will come here today, they will stand up and tell us exactly what budget they would put forward today. But never, ever do they put forward a budget. I mean, it's easy to be in opposition and never to have the chance to lead the council, as we've seen by the gradual reduction in both parties, even in my time here. But it would be nothing to stop either of those two parties coming up with an alternative budget. Mr. Mea stood up and said he got quite excited when he saw we had some extra money and we wouldn't have to increase the council tax this year. So at that point, I thought, surely Mr. Mea will tell us what we can do to change the budget we've put forward to avoid council tax being charged. And I just think you are doing a disservice to the residents of Leicestershire. If you are truly a viable opposition, you've got two choices, really. You either vote for the budget that's being put forward, or if you're not prepared to vote for the budget that's being put forward, you've got to tell us what budget you would vote for and what budget, you know, you would present. What you can't say is, we don't like the hand that we've been dealt, and therefore, we're going to throw all our toys out of the cot and not vote for anything. And indeed, I read carefully again both parties' manifestos before coming tonight, and I expected both parties to stand up and say, if you had a Labour government or a Lib Dem government, they would give Leicestershire so much money, no one would ever have to pay council tax ever again. But it's not in either of your parties' manifestos in recent elections. So all I would urge is, you've come up with no alternative, and therefore, you have no alternative but to vote for what is a pragmatic, responsible budget, which, as the leader and others have said, protects the most vulnerable in our midst and does the most effective we can with the money we have.
Thank you. Could I now call Mrs. Hack, please?
Well, I got to follow that now, haven't I? Thanks, Councillor Brecken, for such a comprehensive review of the papers as put forward, and to the colleagues who've worked really hard in putting this together. I think what's really difficult by the information as you read it is there are very few green shoots, actually, unless you speak to Blake, when there are seven hundred thousand of those green shoots planned. I think what concerns me is when you read the MTFS in line with our strategies that are out at the moment. And you can't help but now see the compounding impact of Conservative and Coalition Government cuts that have led the council to the financial hand of cards it's been dealt. We have thirty-two per cent of our primary schools on the funding floor and sixty per cent of our secondary schools on the funding floor. We have a million pound shortfall to our children where their schools, where there's been increase for free school meals. We know we're a million pound short on there. And if you read the Leicester Children's Health and Wellbeing Strategy, you can see the impact of that. I think the concern for me is when we look at the MTFS and we look at it going forward, we actually haven't considered the general health of the population, where our population is at the moment. And where they're at is that the local authority are having to put sticking plasters on services that have been cut elsewhere. Impacts to Universal Credit, the cuts in the budgets for people with long-term disabilities. They've had significant reductions in their benefits. So these are starting to have compounding problems. The solutions as presented is the best we're going to get. And I agree with Councillor King, we have to change the tack in terms of what the conversations we're having with government. Because fair funding and those conversations genuinely are not working, and we need to really stress forward about the impact it's now starting to have on our residents. Rather than looking, this is our budget, this is how much we need. We need to start talking about people and the impact it's having on our population.
Thank you. Could I now call Mr. Bolter, please?
Thank you, Chairman. I don't often speak on the budget things, but this afternoon has driven me to actually rise and speak to some things here. We've heard how difficult it is, this budget, I read it very thoroughly, all two-hundred-and-sixty-odd pages of it, and I picked one or two bits out. Mr. King says that small increases are inevitable. His authorities put council tax up a small amount, other authorities put a small amount. That is understandable. But to put in an extra forty-two pounds a year is unacceptable. It is completely unreasonable. I represent one of the most deprived divisions in the county, and they won't be able to pay this amount of money. They're already struggling now to pay what they're paying. To pay any more will be just push them beyond belief. So I will not be voting for this budget this afternoon, surprisingly. I'm sure Mr. Rushton will stand up and say something about it in a minute. But if you go all the way through the budget, and if you look on page sixty-six, item one-eight-six, you see that the Conservatives are spending revenue budget on capital schemes. Now, that might bring a reward in future years' time, but our residents have got to survive until then, and that's one of the things. The medicine might well kill the patient, and the way we're going, that's what's going to happen. So a small increase, yes, we might be able to support. Forty-two pounds, no, I can't support. I don't know, ask my colleagues whether they're going to or not, but I definitely won't support that. We've got to think how the people, the most disadvantaged people in our society are going to afford these increases. And the fact is, they won't be able to. We're already talking now, food, heat or council tax. What one of the three are they going to miss out, first of all? You know, it's going beyond belief now, the amount of council tax people have to pay. Band-Aid property is over two thousand pounds a year now, council tax. How are people going to afford that, whether unemployment's going to go up again and everything else? It's absolutely unbelievable. So I'm sorry, I can't support it. I know the hard work officers have done, I appreciate that, appreciate all the paperwork. But while you're spending revenue money to do capital schemes, and there's other way of funding those capital schemes, I fear I can't support.
Thank you. Could I now finally call Mr. Brecken to respond, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try and cover it all. There's been quite a few speakers, which I thank, so thank you for all your comments. I would just sort of start by saying the Treasury Management Strategy statement that we have in the document pack today, it is large, says that the MTFS has no new planned external borrowing. I mean, that's the decision we've made, we could look at that. Obviously, there are hard times ahead, but this MTFS doesn't have any new planned external borrowing. So I think that's a credit to Chris and his team as to what we're looking at and how we're running this at the moment. The county deal, for me, is how we interpret the white paper, and those negotiations will go on. I think that will be successful. But for me, the focus is fair funding, and we will drive that. I think, Mr. Mulaney, you talked about, and I think we agree, levelling up is the thing that we need most. We need a fair funding formula. Some of the funding formulas that we have go back to the nineteen eighties, yet they're still based, you know, government on how we're funded as a county council, and it has to stop. Each year, we do have a Each year, we do have a funding gap. It's normally been two years. This year's the first one where we haven't been able to do that, but again, each year we address that gap, and we'll be able to produce that hopefully by next year. We deliver, and we've done that all the way through. I think if you look at the ways of working with the change that we've just come out of a two-year pandemic, we're still coming out of it at the moment, the ways of working that we have will change how we operate, they'll change our models, they'll change our costs, and there could be some benefits to that. I think hardships acknowledge, I mean, I mentioned it in my sort of speech, but we, as an administration, do acknowledge that precept increases are not welcome, but we were elected as a pair of safe hands to deliver through the pandemic, and that's what we're doing at the moment, and we are making some tough decisions. Max, again, the overspend, it is difficult, difficult decisions we've had to make here. The work that Newton Europe are doing, giving us savings through efficiencies, which we can reinvest, but the good news is, we have not reduced our core services, and that's what we're working hard as an administration to make sure we don't do. We will deliver. Max, I mean, certainly, I think you sort of mentioned, there was a few sympathies there, that you mentioned, and you had sympathies with the administration and obviously the team that have put this budget together, but we will keep on working hard, and we'll keep on working hard for the residents of Leicestershire, and that's every member in this room as well, because that's what we're elected for. And thank Ozzy for his, I thought, sensible words, I thank Nick as leader for his realistic and accurate words, I thank Christine for her honest words, Jewel, I think you had some positive words in there. The adult precept, it is the last year that we can claim it this year, that's why it doesn't go forward in the four-year MTFS. I think we are, we do the very best. You asked a question on equalisation. I will get Declan or Chris to send you a full accountants definition of that, just for your personal attention, because I'm not going to answer it here today. I think scrutiny, I didn't mention scrutiny in my opening comments, but I think the work that the scrutiny process has done through this MTFS, it's been before you all in your various committees, it's been before scrutiny commission, and I think the work that you've done and the feedback you've given says to me that you do feel that there's not a lot of movement in it, but it is a good budget that we have here. It is a shame if you can't vote on it today. Simon, you mentioned that the MTFS, I think our MTFS is real, and all local authorities are in the same position, we're not alone, and we'll continue the hard work that we've been doing. I mean, we have got inflation expected to peak at 7% this year, and that is really after two years of a pandemic, and I think a lot of what we're trying to do is based because of what we're just coming out of now. I agree that a lot of these are government issues, it would be great to get the funding, and that's why we will continue to fight for fair funding. I think the report highlights some of the issues that we have today, but with the money we've got, and we have produced a balanced budget. Back to elected members, I mean, Debra, your words, I think, were passionate about this county's future, our children, our young people. Blake, very environmentally friendly words, thank you for them. Phil, I agree, I think we need to get the MPs in the room. I think we are fed up of saying we need to talk to our MPs, but getting them in the room is a very hard thing to do, but we need to do that, and also the F20 with all the MPs of the affected lowest funding counties, we need to do that as well, and that's something that Chris and I have spoken about, we will be trying to get that happening. Keith, I think you talked about very good and upbeat words, so thank you for them, I think they were appreciated. Peter, you had kind words. Ted, you had very fast words, you sort of needed to depart, but you had very fast but very passionate as always. Pam, you had fair words. Terry, I think you spoke very cleverly, very clever words, so thank you for those. I think really, sort of finally, I think I would just say, Amanda, honest words again, I think we do know where we are, and I think we know what we're trying to deliver with what we've got. And Bill, I think this is a below inflation precept. If we talk about inflation at 7%, it's extraordinary that we're there, highest for many, many years. It's not the fault of this government, it's the fault of the pandemic, which is worldwide. It is the lowest it's been for some years that we've delivered today, and we will do the very best we can. So finally, I'd just say, I mean, this budget will provide protection for our vulnerable children and adults and allow us to build on the COVID support that we've provided over the last two years. Our financial strategy here is prudent, it's deliverable, and although we still need to make some significant savings that will require difficult decisions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Breckenford, for responding to members. We've had 17 members contribute, and I think it's been a very meaningful and very civilised debate, and I thank you all for that. In accordance with Stand in Order 28 bracket four, we will have a recorded vote of the MTFS. I will ask Lauren to conduct this. Please indicate if you are for or against the motion when your name's called.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you, members. So I'll read out your names and invite you to indicate, please, if you vote for or against the motion moved by Mr Brecken and seconded by Mr Shepherd, or if you wish to abstain from voting. Mr Allen.
Aye.
Mr Ashman.
Aye.
Mr Bannister.
Aye.
Mr Barclay.
Aye.
Mr Bedford.
Aye.
Mr Bill.
Against.
Mr Bolter.
Yes.
Mr Bray.
Yes.
Mr Brecken.
Aye.
Mrs Broadley.
Yes.
Mr Champion.
Aye.
Mr Chapman.
Aye.
Mr Charlesworth.
Aye.
Mr Coxon.
Aye.
Dr Feltham.
Aye.
Mr Frisby.
Aye.
Mrs Prior.
Aye.
Mr Galton.
Yes.
Mr Gamble.
Aye.
Mr Gutteraya.
Aye.
Mr Gillard.
Aye.
Mr Grimley.
Aye.
Mrs Hack.
Aye.
Mr Haji Nicolao.
Aye.
Mr Harrison.
Four.
Mr Harrison Rushton.
Aye.
Mr Hills.
Aye.
Mr Hunt.
Good.
Mr King.
Aye.
Mr Lovegrove.
Aye.
Mr Murray.
Aye.
Mr Meir.
Against.
Mr Morgan.
Aye.
Mr Mulaney.
Against.
Miss Newton.
Against.
Mr O'Shea.
Aye.
Mr Orson.
Aye.
Mrs Page.
Four.
Mr Payne.
Aye.
Mr Parton.
Aye.
Mr Pendleton.
Aye.
Mr Fillamore.
Aye.
Mr Poland.
Aye.
Mrs Posnet.
Aye.
Mrs Radford.
Aye.
Mr Richardson.
Aye.
Mrs Richardson.
Aye.
Mr Rushton.
Aye.
Mrs Seaton.
Aye.
Mr Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr Smith.
Aye.
Mrs Taylor.
Aye.
Mr Welsh.
Against.
Mrs A. Wright.
Aye.
Mrs M. Wright.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, members. The result is forty-four, eleven against, so the motion is carried. Thank you. We move on to agenda item number eight, a joint report to the Cabinet and Employment Committee. Becoming anti-racist organisation, I invite Mrs Posnet to move the motion and Mr Brecken to second. Mrs Posnet.
Thank you, Chairman. Can I begin by stating how proud I am of the work of the council in promoting equality issues over a number of years? The most recent survey found that 93% of staff said that the council was committed to equality and diversity, and the council is also fully compliant with the requirements of the Equalities Act. That said, the survey also highlighted some concerns, with 28% of staff saying that they felt discriminated against and 8% experienced bullying and harassment. This is clearly concerning and needs investigating and an understanding of the underlying issues. So the council needs to check its recruitment, retention and workplace culture policies and practice to ensure there is no discrimination, intended or unintentional. Issues of equality are important for all, and I would hope that we could get to a point where all staff feel respected and valued for who they are, and all residents and service users receive services equitably according to their need. So why the emphasis on race? It is important at this time for several reasons. The International Black Lives Matters movement has shown that the legacy of slavery and direct racism can still impact on people's everyday lives. The external review and discussions with the BAME staff network have identified issues within the organisation that need to be addressed. The recent coverage of the institutional racism experienced by Mr Azim Rappik at Yorkshire County Cricket Club has highlighted the harm that can be done to individuals and organisations when issues of perceived racism are ignored or brushed off as banter. The Race at Work Charter commits the council to seven calls to action. Appoint an executive sponsor for race. Capture ethnicity data and publicise progress. Commit at board level to zero tolerance of harassment and bullying. Make clear that supporting equality in the workplace is the responsibility of all leaders and managers. Take action that supports ethnic minority career progression. Support race inclusion allies in the workplace. Include Black, Asian, mixed race and other ethnically diverse-led enterprise in supply chains. So what have we done so far? By signing this charter, we are sending a clear message that the leadership of this council is fully committed to race equality and diversity. The council has launched a new hate reporting policy, encouraging staff to record and report any incidents of potential or perceived racism. This will be supported by training for managers in responding robustly and fairly. We are in the process of setting up a leadership development programme for Black, Asian and multi-ethnic staff, and reviewing the recruitment process to senior management positions. We are commencing a review of our procurement and commissioning strategies with a renewed focus on social value, but much more needs to be done. Can I thank Jane Moore, the Director of Children and Families, for volunteering to be the executive sponsor? Equality is much more than a nature issue, and with Jane at the helm, it is a clear demonstration that the senior officer team of the council recognises this and want to embed good practice and commitment to equalities in everything we do. Leicestershire has a rich and diverse community. By being honest and open and having frank conversations and not sweeping things under the carpet, I believe we can be sure that the opportunities are open to all and we become a fully inclusive council. I commend the report to the council.
Thank you. Could I now call on Mr Brecken to second, please?
Yeah, happy to second, Chair. As chairman of the Employment Committee, we dealt with this at the beginning of February, and we certainly gave it its full, our full support to come to council for approval, so very proud to second this. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Could I now call on Mr Mulaney, please?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Just to say that the Liberal Democrat Group support this policy and will vote for it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I now call upon Mr Rushton?
Chairman, can I, first of all, thank Pam and Louise for the work that they've done in this field over the previous years, and I think Pam actually did it before Louise, then had a couple of years doing your job, and now he's back, and it's something as an administration which we're really, really proud of, and I want to have it placed on record, that the action plan to improve what we do is essential. Now, we are not already, in my view, a racist organisation, and are proud that we are not a racist organisation, but if there is the slightest perception from some members of the team, and we're all a team here, that they are disadvantaged, we need to act on it. And I pledge to Pam and the Cabinet and full council that this administration will do all it can to further the cause, and I thank Pam and Louise for the work they've done. And just as a side, I thank Michael for his support. It's a pity thirteen of you couldn't be here to support, there's only five of you left, but I value the five's support. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Rushton. Could I now call Mr Meyer, please?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I welcome Nick's words, actually, it's very reassuring when the leader himself actually comes out and says, his name's on the report, as they say. It's a very good report. It's a shame that in the 2020s we have to have such a report, but we know what's happened in the wider world of the Black Lives Matters movement, Yorkshire Cricket Club as well. But it has to be driven, our culture has to be driven by the people that we represent, but also the people that live in Leicestershire. And as you said, it's diverse and very much will be growing diverse. Look at the city in Leicester, you know, majority non-white, I believe, or it's tipping that way. The edges of Leicestershire bordering the city will be porous with Black and minority ethnic communities coming as well, and into organic growth as well in our towns as well. And so it's not going away, it's something we have to live with, as they say, and it's a good thing, diversity in culture is a good thing. But within Leicestershire itself, I would stand up and say, Leicestershire itself isn't, the county council isn't a racist organisation, but actually, I don't work here. So we have to go with the statistics and the data and the people that actually work here day in, day out, and as Nick has said, if there is any perception, and there isn't a perception, by the way, but if there's any perception, then we should investigate it and root it out and deal with it, and I think this report deals with it. And there's something interesting, and I just want to deal with what's in the report. It's the profiling of people that apply for the job, and it's so nice to see people from Black and minority ethnic communities apply for positions in the county council. Before, and if we're going back 20 years, people thought we were just waiters and chefs in takeaways, let's be honest, or doctors, they thought the GPs, and that was how narrow-minded people's view were. But now we're representative of all, employment, and it's good to see more people apply. Could be more done, you know, we could hire more people of Black and minority ethnic backgrounds, because the percentages don't quite marry to the, that are hired, that apply for the jobs. But I think earlier on, we said that, you know, in highways, we're looking at expanding the workforce, I'm looking at that particular target market to look in for newer staff and workforce. It'll be interesting to see how that works out, and in a year's time or two years' time, or potentially three or four years' time, if I'm still here, to see the figures and see if that was successful. But thank you very much, Mr Chairman, for listening to me. This is, I wouldn't say this is long overdue, it should never happen in the 2020s, but it's great that we're making this statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I now call Mrs Newton, please?
Thank you very much, Chair. I do apologise, I've had an eye operation and I can't see very well. I just wanted to say that I'm absolutely pleased with the statement and the commitment to equality and diversity. As most of you will know, Nick is also the lead in fire, and I'm the equalities champion in fire, and I have to say, the support I've had from Nick has been excellent in this area, and we've done a lot of proactive work. We've actually won awards for our work, and I'm sure, I think the county won an award as well, if I'm right. So let's keep the momentum going on equality and diversity, and I'd like to see more women at the top level, we've not got enough. Okay.
Thank you. Could I now call on Mrs Posnet to respond? Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for the response to the statement. I would like to thank Mr Rushton for his support. I don't think he realises how valued his support is as leader of this council, and for him to stand up today and support that is, show his support for this, I'm really grateful for, and thank him very much for all that support. Thank you, Mr Mulaney, for supporting us. Mr Meir, I agree with your comments, and thank you very much. And Mrs Newton, how can I not agree with the comments that you've said? I know I've worked with you in the past in some equality things, and I've always valued the advice and the support that you've given. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Right, we will now take a vote on the motion on the order paper. All those in favour, please show now. Carried unanimously, thank you. That then concludes our meeting of our county council. Today's date, the 23rd of February 2022. And now, thank you all for your contributions, wish you all well and a safe journey home, and declare our meeting closed. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Well done. Thank you. Thank you.